Chill out with the chief, Mark Two, on the dial five station seven. Delaware Road.
Call the regular scheduled meeting of Franklin City Council to order. Appreciate everyone coming. If you, I would ask you to please silence your cellphone and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God.
Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. We do have citizens time. We have one person to sound, to sign up. If you would, please come up, state your name and your address. Dick Gilbert.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dick Gilbert, one twenty-four Woodland Circle in Franklin. And I came to talk about cardboard recycling. I was disappointed when the city had to give up the recycling program, although I understand why, why you had to do it. But then I was optimistic when you said that you would be recycling cardboard if people brought it down to the city, to containers. I didn't see any publicity about it, where to bring the material, what was acceptable, how, what form should, should it be? Could you, should you collapse the boxes or not? So I accumulated, I saved cardboard boxes for about a month and called Public Works and they told me the container was behind Fred's restaurant. So I went down to behind Fred's in the alleyway behind there. There's a dumpster that said recycle on it. It had boxes not collapsed, but just boxes mixed in with plastic bottles. There were no instructions as to what was acceptable or how to deposit the, the cardboard. I wanted to suggest to the city that if we're serious about recycling cardboard, that we should provide access, we should have a location that's got easy access to, for the citizens with publicity about it and instructions as, as to whether you should collapse boxes or not. One possible location I was thinking of would be at the boat ramp below Barrett's Landing parking lot. There's lots of space, easy access. If a more suitable, suitable location could be found and we got some good publicity out about it, I think it would be helpful and it would increase the amount of recycling that people do. Since the end of the recycle pickup, just driving around on trash pickup day, I see lots of boxes and trash containers. So I doubt that very many people are bringing their boxes down to recycling. I think that another idea would be to ask people to save their cardboard boxes for a month and the city might just go around and pick them up. I think you'd get a lot more participation if, if you could do that. Either, either way, whether it's just a better location with publicity and instructions as to what, what's acceptable. I just think that we could improve the program. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? If not, we'll move along to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the June twenty-eighth, twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Any corrections or addition to those meeting minutes?
Mayor Rabel may I ask that those be deferred to the next meeting due to staff being out of the office?
Okay. So we don't have them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then we'll just move to introduce some new employees.
Yes, I am thrilled that we have several new employees to introduce to you all this evening. I'll first ask Ms. Spence, our Director of Finance, to introduce the employees under the Finance Department.
Hello. Good.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, City Manager Jared, I'd like to introduce you to Jeannie Riggins. She's the new payroll technician. Jeannie Riggins, she's the new payroll technician in the Finance Department. She's originally from Colonial Heights and currently living in, living in Jewryville with her husband of eight years and her three dogs. Her stepson Travis lives in Chesapeake and her husband is the manager over here in the Franklin Collision Center. Her mom lives in Colonial Heights, real close with her. She loves working out in the yard, going to Outer Banks. She works, has worked in thirty years in healthcare, but she's coming over here and the city government's gonna get us straight here. So we're really glad to have her in the Finance Department. Next here, we've got a Franklin hometown girl. She's been married thirty-three years, two daughters. She's worked here for Schulz Homes for twenty-seven years. Started in inventory control, worked her way up to manager. But we're real excited to have her over in, as a utility customer services rep too in the downstairs here in the utility department. She, her hobbies are ride motorcycles with her husband, loves checking out the mountains and going over to Lake Gaston with her family. So we are really glad to have her on board in the utility department. So we're really.
Some of us know her name, but some of us don't.
Yeah, Lori White. So thank you so much. Sorry.
That's okay. So welcome ladies. It's good to have you all on board. Thank you all.
Next we have Arisha Corvell, soon to be Arisha Jones. She started as the Human Resources Assistant last week and with Ms. Barnes being on vacation, I can say that she was a lifesaver to me last week. So she joined us, like I said, a week and a half ago. Arisha has a bachelor's degree in psychology and she's currently pursuing a master's degree in clinical mental health counseling. She has extensive experience providing administrative support in different work environments, including healthcare and education. And she's already shown herself to be a great addition to the administrative suite team. So, Arisha, thank you and welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard. We may need, need your help in more than one way.
That's it.
Is that it?
We will have new employees in several other departments at our next meeting.
Well, that's good. Well, thank you very much. And again, welcome. It's good to have you all on board with us. We have the National Night Out proclamation. I'm gonna have Councilman Coaklin read the proclamation and I'll give the chief an opportunity to say a few things before we take any action on it. Is that okay?
That's, that's great. Thank you.
City of Franklin National Night Out proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August third, twenty twenty-one entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Franklin to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Franklin plays a vital role in assisting the Franklin Police Department through a joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Franklin and is supporting National Night Out twenty twenty-one locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Franklin be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the fact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Franklin. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important things of the National Night Out program. Therefore, I, Mayor Frank Rabel, and the members of the City of Franklin City Council do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Franklin to join the Franklin Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the National Night Out on August third, twenty twenty-one. Further, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Frank Rabel, and the members of the City of Franklin City Council do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August third, twenty twenty-one, as National Night Out in the city of Franklin. Signed as twenty-sixth day of July, twenty twenty-one. Frank M. Rabel, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Chief, I'll give you a minute or two to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. This is Jared. I brought Ms. Bailey up with me as well. Ms. Bailey has been a great supporter of this event as well. A lot of good things we have at Armory Field next Tuesday nights for about a week out. We hope everyone will attend. Ms. Coaklin's been working on our committee and working real hard as well. So we're very hopeful to have a good turnout, have good weather, be a good event. I appreciate the opportunity to have our banner hung up here tonight. And each one of you receive a ball cap that you can wear next Tuesday night proudly, recognize the National Night Out. And we hope like to have a good turnout, a good and safe event, show off a lot of the things we have within the city and just continue to showcase like we do.
Good. And thank you all for your efforts on pulling this together. I know. Thank you very much. I will now have a, take a motion to adopt the National Night Out proclamation. Do I have such a motion?
Yes, I so moved that the City of Franklin National Night Out proclamation be adopted.
Okay, I have a motion. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks. And thank you all again for all the work on that. And, and we do encourage citizens to come out and join us next Tuesday evening. Should be, should be a fun evening. Thank you. Financial matters, Ms. Jared?
Yes, sir. We have three budget amendments for consideration this evening. I'd like to ask Ms. Spence to come to the podium to walk you through them. Most of them have to deal with end of the year true-up as we do every year. So, thank you.
Good evening again. The first budget amendment is twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven. The first item for consideration is budget, item number one, is to adjust general fund appropriations based on fiscal year twenty-one projections. And this is, as City Manager Jared mentioned, it's just at the end of year true-up, based on the way things fell out when all the, most of the expenditures have been posted out and we're just realigning the expenditures based on appropriations. The net effect to the general fund is zero. Item number two is to adjust comprehensive services fund appropriations based on the fiscal year twenty-one projections. There is the expenditures have just got, were a little bit higher in the last two months based on some foster care, children's placements. Item number three is to adjust the school operating fund appropriations for retention stipends per the attached request. And that memo was provided to you in your package from the schools. Item number four, to adjust Western Tidewater Home Consortium fund appropriations based on the projections. And that was realigning their revenues with their expenditures. The net effect was zero. And to item number five is to record the financing package, which was approved by council on May tenth, twenty twenty-one, and receive those proceeds on the June thirtieth, the last day of the fiscal year. Are there any questions from council members?
Anybody have any questions from Ms. Spence? Go ahead and take the desired action of council on this.
You can or all three, whatever.
Can we do, can we do all three at one time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll just do, do all three at one time.
Okay, so a budget amendment twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight is to recognize eighty-three thousand dollars with the American Rescue Plan Act revenue to pay for eighty-three thousand dollars with the expenditures related to the Business Center internet upgrade, College Park renovations, and MLK Center renovations. They were expenditures we had actually spent for fiscal year twenty-one. So I can draw those down in fiscal year twenty-one. And they'll be reviewed to, with you in the plan of action tonight as well. And the last item is for fiscal year twenty-two. And what this is allowing us to do primarily for item number one is this is for unspent council-approved broad project funds, which you approved in fiscal year twenty-one. We don't wanna stop with allowing the just departments to go ahead and spend with these COVID-related projects. Usually, we typically don't do this till the fall of the year, but we're trying to keep these COVID-type projects moving along. So that's for item number one. Item number two is to budget revenues for the regional fire training fund and to appropriate such revenue for use. Item number three, the Franklin Southampton Charities has appropriated, sent revenue over to the city of Franklin, the amount of ten thousand dollars. And that's to appropriate such revenue for new uses. And item number four is to appropriate fiscal year twenty-one unspent COVID and American Rescue Plan monies. And that's to allow us to spend a hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars worth of the municipal utility relief funding. That's the final amount of money we have, the municipal utility relief. And there's forty thousand, five hundred worth of a purchase order left that is gonna be submitted for payment, which we have to do since there's a purchase order out there for fiscal year twenty-one. The rest of the American Rescue Plan will be reviewed with you this evening. And that's what I have for you for approval.
Any questions on, on any of those?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve budget amendments twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight, and twenty twenty-two dash one?
Oh, budget amendment twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, that's twenty, and twenty twenty-two dash one, I so moved that it be approved?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Jared, we got some old and new business. The American Rescue Plan Act Plan of Action.
Yes, sir. So as you all know, over the last few months, city staff's been analyzing the American Rescue Plan Act guidance. And we received what we believe to be close to the final guidance. And now is the time to approve the plan of action for those funds. So the city of Franklin was awarded nine point eight million dollars. We've received, as I shared with you all several weeks ago, the first half of that money on June thirtieth, which you just appropriated into this fiscal year. We will receive the second payment to the city of Franklin, we anticipate, on June thirtieth of next year. But we spent, staff spent an incredible amount of time analyzing the guidance, looking at what's allowed, looking at the greatest way that we can make an impact to the city of Franklin. And honestly, it's very exciting because this is like generational impact that we'll be making across the city. As you all are well aware, we have a, quite a number of pent-up capital projects that just based on fiscal stress and limitations haven't been able to accomplish. And there's a tremendous amount of capital work that we're going to be able to do based on the federal funds that we've been awarded. So the entire lead team gathered, looked at the restrictions. We talked through what is in, previously had been in our CIP budget, projected out to spend over the years to come. And we looked at what would be allowed based on the American Rescue Plan interim guidance. And so we're really proud of the plan that we've put before you tonight and the positive impact that it's going to make on the citizens. I'll briefly run through the projects. Again, most of these have been listed in your CIP for years and we've just carried them forward, unable to complete them. If there's any project-specific questions, the department heads are here tonight if I'm unable to answer it. But I feel like you'll have a strong familiarity with a lot of the things that I'll be talking about tonight because, as I mentioned, we've talked about them previously. So first I'll start with the police department. This will authorize two police officers and pay for their salary and expenditures for two and a half years for police cars, which you well know has been a huge issue for us to have to tackle. Radio system, as you all know, this has been something we've discussed at numerous retreats. We're considering a few options. We need to improve that system to not only cover city of Franklin city limits, but our entire response area. And it's critical that we keep our communication staff safe and able to effectively communicate back to the dispatch center. With the increased call volume associated with the increase in gun violence, as we've, as we've discussed at previous meetings, we'll also be unfreezing one dispatcher position. This will allow for the installation of fourteen cameras across the city of Franklin. And these, the camera installation will be based on statistics related to gun violence and where the department needs those cameras to be placed. Fun body cameras for the officers, for their protection, as well as for the protection of the citizens. A police truck to pull our mobile dispatch unit that we purchased with COVID funds previously. And then tactical helmets for the police department when they're responding to increased gun violence issues, as we've discussed at the last meeting. Moving on to the Parks and Recreation piece of this, and again, this is really where you get into the transformational level projects and ones that we've just not been able to fund in the past. Renovations to the Martin Luther King Center on Oak Street. Some of which, as you saw in the previous budget amendment, we did this last fiscal year, but they're recoverable. So a lot of these projects too will free up money in either some of the, in the, in the general fund as well. The Riverwalk Project, which we've long discussed and just not had the full amount of money to complete. This will increase our tourism efforts. And with this funding, along with what International Paper and several other entities have committed towards that project, should allow us to build that out. That will include kayak launch, access to the river, and we hope will be a boost to downtown because of the additional visitors. The city pool has, needs to be upgraded. That project's allowed. Hayden Park upgrades, you all talked about these extensively at our last budget meeting. So this will allow us to have a improvements to that Hayden Park area for athletic fields there. Armory Field upgrades, as you all know, we partner very closely with Camp Community College for their softball teams and baseball teams. And there's some improvements to the softball field that need to be made that we can do utilizing these funds. The College and Bruce Street parks, we've made some minor improvements to those parks, but they need additional equipment. This will allow us to do that. Blackwater Park, which we just discussed earlier, and then the Armory Park bathroom renovations. We have so much activity that happens at Armory Park and the bathrooms are in desperate need of renovation, especially with the number of citizens that utilize that facility. And not just, it's truly a community facility with the college and the high school and all the other entities that utilize that. The next item is premium pay. We did not do COVID pay when we had the CARES Act money. We had so many projects that needed. When we had the CARES Act money, we had so many projects that needed to happen, it just wasn't the staff recommendation at that time. But, uh, the localities around us did make premium pay payments to their employees. We've had, you know, no one stayed at home. You know, we had the few one-offs of teleworking, but everyone came to work, um, all day during the pandemic, interacting with citizens to make sure that we were keeping them as safe as possible and allowing the function of government to continue. So this would be a two thousand dollar one-time payment to full-time employees and a thousand dollar one-time payment to part-time employees to recognize their commitment to the city during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And with regards to tourism, this will allow us to paint the exterior of the depot, to have the interpretive panels, uh, put up for true, like, tourism-related activities. As you all know, we've taken over the depot, have our tourism director there. This will really allow us to make it as it should be with an actual place for visitors that are coming to all of our new park facilities, um, a place to go and learn about the history of the City of Franklin. Um, as we've discussed with you previously, the overtime laws have changed. And due to increased calls, uh, related to CPS and APS cases, we anticipate, um, a huge demand on overtime in the Social Services Department. And so, this funding will allow us to offset that and not put pressure on the general fund, um, because of what they're responding to. Uh, this next one, uh, I'm honestly really excited about due to a number of conversations we've had previously. But half a million dollars toward blight and blighted properties. As you all know, we discussed extensively prior to the pandemic, we have this list of properties that need to be demolished that we've just never been able to truly fund to make an impact. And we feel like it would, it's going to make a positive community impact to those who have to live next to these abandoned and blighted properties. And so, I've pulled a list of the, some of you that have been on council for a while will recall the PowerPoint Mr. Goodwin made of the properties that have been in queue to be demolished for years. And with this funding, uh, we should be able to work through that list. Related to emergency services, um, we do need to purchase, um, our EMS providers are going into very dangerous situations. And so, tactical vests for them to keep them safe should they be in an area that is experiencing gun violence. Tactical helmets, just like for the Police Department, and then a new emergency operation software. Emergency operations, uh, in COVID and post-COVID are going to look very different. You know, we want to keep the staff separated so that we can all stay well, especially the lead team. And there's new software that we can purchase that will allow us to continue to seamlessly act in a state of emergency should we experience anything moving forward in the future, but specifically related to any EOC operations associated with the hurricane or anything moving forward. We need automated, automated gates at Power and Light. Right now, they're just manual and for security purposes. That's an important project, again, that's been in the CIP. The other major focus of the American Rescue Plan outside of responding to gun violence and COVID impacts is infrastructure. And we have tremendous pent-up investments in our wastewater, uh, sewer system. So, I'm not going to go through each of these specifically, but it's tremendous investment in our wastewater treatment plant, in our sewer CIP, and in stormwater projects, which is, we're experiencing right now some issues related to stormwater with the tremendous amount of rain that we're receiving this evening. And then the other one that's honestly generational is paving, two million dollars towards paving. This does have to be in the, uh, Qualified Distress Census Track. But it will free up general fund money that we had put towards paving to be utilized in the other census track within the city. So, Mr. Edwards is going to take the paving plan. You know, we scored all of the streets, they received a grade, and will tackle those, the worst-related streets. So this will help us make a huge impact on that paving plan, which to date hasn't been funded at the level that it needs to be. Um, we talked about the Business Center wireless upgrades just a few minutes ago in the budget amendment. But then citywide wireless improvements, there's a number of projects included in this that will make access to wireless internet for the general population much easier. I think we all realize that the days of virtual calls and homework on Zoom are here to stay. And so, uh, amping up the city's wireless infrastructure will be a great advantage to a number of our citizens. And then we've left some funds for contingency. We do anticipate, just with the ebb and flow of the market right now, some of these projects may go over budget. Um, and then as we move through spending them, we may find other things that need to be added. So we've left some portion of contingency that will come back to you, um, if necessary, but we just feel like it's the right thing to do at this point in time, not knowing where the market's going to be. Especially with, in regards to supplies, right now it's changing daily. So we feel like it's the safest thing for us to do to allow us to adequately finish and complete all these projects and not go over budget. So, I know it was a lap that I threw at you. I hope you had time to review it, um, when you received the agenda. But like I said, the lead team's here. If you have project-specific questions, we're really excited about the impact this will make to the city. We would ask for your approval this evening though, so we can get going. Every community in the nation is approving these projects. And so we want to make sure that, over the next two fiscal years, um, we're as efficient as possible and get these projects moving because it is quite exciting for the city.
Now's the time for questions.
Thank you for all that. Oh, I have, uh, a few. Basically, uh, we talked about, um, the radio communication, uh, in the tower. Uh, will it be where we can, um, contact other municipalities if we have, um, storms, uh, you know, something of that nature?
Right. So I'm going to start to answer that question and look to be corrected if, uh, um, misspeak. So we, as, as we discussed at your retreat last summer, we have, we're running a two-track option. So we, um, will, the county is planning to issue an RFP for their radio communication system because they have to upgrade theirs. We will be included in that RFP, reserving the right to act alone if necessary. But it's critical to all of us that we be able to communicate with them because, as I was mentioning earlier, our response area is not just Franklin city limits. Separate and apart from the EMS contract, we respond to sixty square miles out, seven sixty-four square miles out and around the city. So we must be able to intercommunicate with Southampton. So we, that RFP, I understand, is close to being finished. The courthouse project is the one that we're trying to wrap up right now. But the committee is meeting. We have two staff members that are serving on that radio committee. Our, our plan is for us to be able to have interoperable communication and not act in a silo, if that answers your question.
Yes. Uh, thank you. I had, um, one more, and it's about the pavement. Basically, because, um, as I checked, some of the, uh, streets in certain areas hadn't been paved since, uh, probably nineteen seventy-one. It's been a long time, and I know with, uh, the budgeting, uh, going through that, um, we were, we were patching up as we went. But I'm happy to know we have money for that. And, uh, the, uh, infrastructure of the water and sewer, with some of the pipes, basically. I, I know we didn't want to pave over that until we handled that. So I'm happy, um, to know that those things are, are going forth. And that the city is going forth, basically, with some of the projects that we could not do before, uh, because of weather and so forth. So, um, it's great.
Any questions, comments?
Well, I just, I studied this, uh, budget that was proposed, and I tell you that I commend the staff. They've done an excellent job. Most of the things that are on here are, we truly need to get done in the city, and I think we're blessed to get this money. And finally be able to catch up with a lot of stuff that we've been trying to do for quite some time. So, I'm in total support of the budget and, uh, will make such a motion to approve if the mayor's ready for it.
We'll go ahead and accept that motion. I have a motion to, to approve the, uh, City of Franklin American Rescue Plan, uh, proposed projects.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would just echo what, what you had said. I, I mean, kudos to the staff and, and Ms. Jarrett for pulling the staff together to come up with such a comprehensive list. Uh, you know, I, I applaud you all for that. I think, you know, that, and, and being able to take the things that we've been talking about at our retreats to, to do this. And so, this is, this is really good. Newfound money, but we're spending it in the right way. So thank you very much.
I do really, that made them all come tonight, in case there were any questions that I wasn't able to answer individually. But I do really appreciate all their efforts and their willingness to follow the guidance. And, um, especially finance has been, um, really plugged in on weekly, uh, webinars from the state. And as I've shared with you over the last few months, things change so quickly. Just to keep everyone on the same page with regards to next steps. So you've authorized us to complete these projects because the amount of money that we're getting is in excess of one percent of our operating budget. We'll hold a public hearing, um, to formalize what you've approved tonight. So that ad was sent to the paper and will be held at your August ninth meeting. And that's just formalizing the acceptance of everything that we've just talked through. And, and that's required for any funding that we would receive in excess of one percent of our operating budget. So that will be next, and then we'll be able to get going. And we have a tentative timeline breaking these projects up between this fiscal year and next fiscal year that I've circulated to the staff. We're not going to be able to do it all. And again, that first payment of four point five came, but we have to wait for that second payment. So you'll see work start soon in the fall and then finish out this year and then move into next fiscal year. Projects like the radio project probably won't happen until the next fiscal year just because there's so much to be done and so many moving parts. But again, I'm excited and I think the staff is too for the positive progress that this will make.
Any other questions, okay?
No.
If we have a motion and, uh, and, uh, duly seconded, so, uh, we will call for the question. All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. And again, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jarrett, we'll move along to your City Manager report.
Yes, sir. So we did have one new case of COVID in the city in the last seven days, but we've stayed at that lower level of COVID cases. I would stress, as I did at the last meeting, that individuals that have not signed up for the COVID, uh, utility relief payment plan do so immediately. Um, those things will end August thirtieth. We talked about it at length at our last meeting. But, um, we are date-stamping, time-stamping those applications that come in. And so really are stressing individuals to sign up for the repayment plan if they need that. We, uh, were notified today that the bid opening for the courthouse has moved again. It has now moved to August tenth at two P M. Again, I plan to attend on behalf of the city. So that project is moving forward with, with haste now. The trailer for, uh, the temporary facilities was delivered surprisingly to all, um, this past week. And so I understand that that's to be put together on Wednesday. Uh, the water line's already been installed to that trailer, and Mr. Johnson will be meeting with a contractor to install the decking and the, um, handicap ramp that will go up to that trailer. So I also understand for Mr. Johnson that Glavion Homes had finished the plan design for the renovations to Hundred O Elementary School, and he will be, um, including that, and that's why the bid opening was pushed back to August tenth. So, as I receive additional updates on that, I'll be sure to let you know. Um, we continue to monitor the truck traffic on Clay Street. I just want to mention this, but we've now tracked it for thirty-two hours, and there have only been eleven trucks. So we'll continue to monitor that issue as time allows with the staff. You know, certainly have strong demands on the Police Department, but we'll continue to monitor that. We had seventy attendees at our movie night in the park, uh, this past weekend, which we think is great for our first, um, night of that. The next one is scheduled for August twenty-first. That'll be at Barrett's Landing, and we'll be showing Monsters, Inc. So we certainly would encourage families to join us that night. I'm thrilled that we're able to offer this, uh, through our Parks and Rec Department and just would ask for individuals to attend. There's a number of activities going on, um, throughout the city, farmer's market, cruising, we bejamen. So, again, we'll just encourage individuals to come out and see all that we have to offer in downtown Franklin. And that's all I have unless there are any specific questions.
Anybody have anything? Any questions from Ms. Jarrett? Thank you very much, Ms. Jarrett. All right, we'll move along to, uh, council, uh, staff reports on, uh, boards and commissions. Anybody have anything?
Um, I, I have some information from, uh, V M L. Basically, it was, uh, Amer- Ameris Conference and, uh, and a conference for, um, city leaders. And, um, I, we haven't had time to, to put it together to, to give it to council yet, but, but we'll get, uh, the next meeting. But it was a good conference in Charlottesville, uh, especially, um, uh, and I'm just going to highlight briefly and, and quickly, um, council management relationships. As we, as we as council members, uh, talking with our constituents and, and explaining that to our constituents, constituents is very important. We have that information. Uh, the others, Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Council. And, and there, there are some good things in there, what council people can do and what they can't do. And we had, um, also, uh, next would be, um, budgeting. We worked out and talked with different localities and cities, towns and counties as well. Working, working on, uh, the budget, uh, for our local governments. And as well as we have four-year, uh, also, four-year classes. And you'll receive that information in, uh, at the next, uh, council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Sir.
Okay, if, if not, uh, thank you all for coming, and we're going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into closed session, and then we'll do the.
I'll move with the City Council, the City of Franklin, Virginia adjourning to close meeting pursuant to authority granted by those sections of the Code of Virginia. Reference on the agenda for the permitted purposes provided and to discuss those subjects described and set forth on the agenda.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, and we're going into closed again. Thank you all for coming. Be safe.